Good evening and welcome to the August 4, 2025 study session of your Ashland City Council. This evening we have two agenda items, the ELEA ordinance and ratification of three-year labor agreements and the discussion also of the nonrepresented employee agreement. So take us away, Sabrina.
So I'm going to hand this off to Johan and the chief here, but we're going to revisit the ELEA one more time. Our goal tonight is to figure out whether or not we are bringing ordinance forward or not. That's kind of the decision point tonight. So if we choose not to move forward, the ELEA will stay as is. If you choose to move forward, the chief is here to present some options for what that would look like.
And just to be clear, what we're talking about here is changing the structure of the ELEA. This council has already created two ELEAs.
That's correct. We have two ELEAs, so this is how the ELEA would function essentially.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilors. Ty O'Meara, Police Chief, and as Sabrina noted, I'm joined in this presentation by the city attorney, Johan. This is a little bit of information that I presented in the February city council meeting, and it lends itself toward the picture of why do we need this? And I know that that's an important feature of this conversation. And so I am re-presenting this information to demonstrate, hopefully, or at least start to paint that picture, continue to paint that picture, that we're trying to give the officers a tool to be best reactive to these problem individuals with the chronic negative behavior. So in my opinion, this data lends itself toward the painting of that picture. I also think that just on its face and on its own merits, the idea of giving our police officers the best, most responsive tools to address issues in a lawful compassionate manner, that that is kind of self-evident in my opinion. But I present this in light of what was asked to be brought into this, and I think that this continues to lend itself to that. So we have come to council several times to talk about this, just as a reminder of where we started. We started with requesting the Medford model. The Medford model has been challenged in federal court and upheld as being constitutional. The Medford model is based off of the chief of police or his designee, so a police officer, substantiating a single qualifying violation in a geographically defined zone and then appealing the person from that geographically designed or defined area. The person can appeal that decision to a judge. We are all familiar with how that conversation went, so we came back. And the next round of discussions, and there's been so many of these conversations, I'm a little bit hazy on what was talked about on what date, but we dialed it back a little bit. And even though the Medford one does seem to be tried and true and challenged in federal court and defended as being constitutional, that's not the flavor for Ashland, I respect that, so let's pull it back a little bit more and let's say it's three or more qualifying violations and one or more crime of any severity. And what we are actually bringing forward as the current proposal is even more restrictive than that. It's three or more qualifying violations, two or more non-person crimes. So now we're differentiating between trespass as a non-person misdemeanor, minor theft as a non-person misdemeanor crime, and then one or more person crime felony or unauthorized burning. And then we have the officers' application to the judge with ample documentation. We have the revised literature that's in the packet being handed out at every step of the way. We have the defendant being invited, given the opportunity to appear right alongside the police officer and make the case against expulsion or make the case in favor of more than usual variances. And of course, the variances that are already built into it is that the language does not impact somebody's passage through the area or their need to visit a service like Grocery Doctor, et cetera. There's a lot of carve-outs. And again, the person would be provided with substantial documentation. And then even if the expulsion order is issued, the person still has ten days to appeal it, and the expulsion order is stayed and is not enforceable while that appeal is navigating the system. So I really do think that this is a good tool to give the officers. It streamlines that middle process. It's not creating the two enhanced law enforcement areas, as the mayor said, those exist. It's not commenting on the end result of it. The expulsion is still going to be there based off of a judge's order. It is simply simplifying, streamlining the part in the middle where we are not waiting for convictions for chronic negative behavior, which can last many months or with criminal matters easily over a year. And it's not relying on the city attorney's office to pick up the ball and bring it into the court. It's the officers who are most familiar with the chronic negative behavior applying with the appropriate documentation directly to the judge, giving the defendant a chance to argue against the expulsion order. So that is what the current ask is, and our ask of you is that you give us some direction. Do you want to see this come back for an actual first reading, or do we just want to forget about this altogether?
Okay, questions? Counselor Bloom.
Yes, thank you, Chief, and Johan, for putting this together. And I appreciate kind of the process that we took to get to this point, and I think it really highlights the importance of compromise. And sometimes the best policies, I think the best policies come out of compromise, a give and take, to find a solution that I think works for everybody. My question is around the variance process, which I appreciate and exists within the ELEA as it stands now. Specifically around the variance process, I'm curious if there's a mechanism through the court. If circumstances change for somebody midway through, maybe they move and they end up moving into the area that is the ELEA, is there a mechanism for them to essentially go back to the court and say, hey, this is a new circumstance, or I changed doctors and it's now here? Just want to clarify and make sure that we're on the same page.
Well, the short answer to that is I'm sure we can build anything into it if we want to. If that question is specific to the example of a doctor's visit, that would not need a variance because you don't have to substantiate what doctor you're going to, just that you are going to a doctor's office or going to a grocery store. So that level of specificity would not be a matter, would not need to be a matter of record with the court or allowance by the court. But if that's a sticking point to any magnitude at all, I'm sure that we could build something like that in that it can be adjusted mid-flow on application of the defendant.
That's true, and I believe the variance language in the rough, rough draft we put out says, at any given time, the judge can be compelled by, or can offer a new variance by compelling circumstances.
Great. I think that answers the question, and I don't see a need in adding language in because it's already pretty much in there. Great, thank you so much.
Counselor Duquesne.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Ty. So my question is regarding, you mentioned the appeal. So when you look at the documentation, what is the appeal process and how much is it the appeal? And part three of that is if somebody has gone to court to appeal this, how does the officer know this is happening? Where's the communication?
I don't know the answer to the cost, if any, for the appeal. Maybe somebody else here can answer that. We will have to, if we do this, we will have to establish a procedure. We already have robust communications between this building, the municipal court, and our building, the police department next door, and we would just have to ensure that that is another solid line of communication, that if an order is issued by the judge and then stayed by the appeal application. We have mechanisms in place for so many important documents and warrants for arrest and reports flowing back and forth that I am very, very confident we could work out a solid system for being notified when a timely as appeal is filed here, that the officers know that they cannot enforce that expulsion order.
And so, thank you for that, Chief. Perhaps, Johan, you could let me know, what is the cost for an appeal and the process? Because our community that we're dealing with, you know, money for an appeal can be costly.
Are you talking about the cost for the appeal to the expelled person or the cost to the city?
To the person.
Okay. Yeah, I don't believe we have a filing fee in place yet. I mean, it'd be like any other request for a hearing, but I don't imagine there would be any cost associated with it to the person.
If it's allowable, I would want it to be a zero-cost appeal to remove any barriers.
Because it's a one, you know, it's a very quick process. Essentially, there's not going to be an extra, significant extra burden on the officer because it happens within 10 days, so we're not tracking down witnesses, that sort of thing, but.
Because I think that would be good, significant, to have that verbiage in there, that there's no cost for an appeal. And then if this is to move forward, what that communication would look like and opening that solid communication, I think is so important because if someone has been expelled, expelled from an area, it's, to be able to have that communication, they might not have the paperwork on them, they're stopped again by a police officer, I'm in appeal, how do we know this? So the communication part, I think, is very important, very serious.
Yeah, and I think, sorry, Chief, I think we could very easily put in a no-cost variance and a no-cost appeal, you know, at least in the initial appeal. I don't want someone appealing every 10 days, but, but yeah, an initial appeal and initial variance approach, you know, I think we could do that. And then, like the chief said, I think, just similar to a, you know, a LED's warrant situation, like it would just appear in red or appear like under appeal, like when you run a background check.
Counselor Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Could you go back to your, I think it's not your intro slide, but your second slide? Yeah, I was just hoping that you could do two things for us. Go over a couple of examples for us, and we just kind of glossed over this, so I was hoping you could put a little attention to it. And then another thing that I felt like needed a little bit more attention was, you talked about the court and the judge and referenced, we know how that went, but I was hoping you could just recap on that for us.
I might need further explanation on that part, I'm not following.
Sure. This body asked for some input from the court, from the judge. And in your presentation, a couple of slides forward, I believe you said something very brief about the court and the judge having input on this? And then we moved on to the next. I was wondering if.
I don't recall saying that, I don't think I intended to.
I can clarify, I think what he said is he brought the Medford model to the council, and we know how that went. I provided feedback from the judge when I sent out the draft ordinance, we had run that by the judge, and he was in agreement with the process.
Great. So if you could just go over these examples and then just highlight what we heard back from the judge, I would appreciate that.
So, and I fully recognize that even if this is put in, it is in place, it's put in place with the procedure that we have now. It's put in place in the secondary ELEA. I don't have any illusion that this is a magic wand to cure all ills, but it is a useful tool for the officers. So as an example, person A, if expelled from Cap East in February of 2024 based off of an arrest, we could have avoided up to maybe 10 additional charges throughout the rest of 2024. And I think I have in my mind who that person is, and that is in fact a person who substantially is no longer knocking around Ashland and has been successfully removed as a chronic troublemaker. Person B, if expelled from Cap West in 2024 after an arrest, could have avoided six additional incidents in 2024. So there's two examples of, if we had been able to take action and had a most responsive tool to a criminal arrest and get this process knocked out expeditiously, maybe we would have had something in place to avoid that person even coming into this part of the city for a period of time, and we would have avoided repeated incidents of negative behavior. And the judge part of it, did you guys figure out?
Yeah, so.
Could you fill us in a little bit, Johan?
Yeah, so we sent the kind of mock-up language that I sent to council, to the judge, Judge Mulkins, and asked, do you see any issues with this? Would you like to see it? And he was very on board. He thought it would be a great process, it could move things along quicker. One of the, it's hard to quantify the cost savings of, you know, repeatedly bringing people in who failed to appear and not getting, you know, convictions knocked out, but he saw the benefit of the ELEA being able to take action, at least to that point.
Right. Well, thank you both.
Counselor Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, and appreciate this, Johan. This question's for you, if you don't mind. So I know that there's been, it seems, some misconceptions around denial of, say, due process or equal protection and so forth. So in the most legalist summary that, super quick analysis that an attorney could do, could you just kind of dive in just a little bit about the constitutionality of this, how this is administrative review, that there certainly rights are being upheld, you've got the opportunity to contest it and so forth? So how do you feel about it from, would say, a legal analysis standpoint relative to deprocess and constitutionality?
Yeah, we've looked at this in depth, both Carmel and I, and I feel really good about it. I mean, the notice requirement, the chief has put something in, you know, the thought out there that it will be above and beyond what is required, in-person notice, both with pamphlets, you know, the map, and then conversations, you know, pause there for a second. Most of this is people who the law enforcement officers are familiar with, so they're having these conversations anyway, but now we're formalizing it with, hey, this could affect you if I see you back here again, you know, or two more times, you're doing this again two more times, you're going to get expelled, here's information on that. And then the opportunity to be heard, you know, it's different than, you know, an arrest or citation where they get mailed or they get given their paperwork at the jail. The officer's directly saying, we're going to have this hearing on Tuesday X date, you need to be here, here's your opportunity to represent your, you know, your case before the judge. And then additionally, there's appeals information in there too. So I mean, we're really just getting the notice and opportunity to be heard out there. And it doesn't affect the underlying criminal citation, which will still have the high standard of proof associated with it. So it's really, I think it covers a lot of bases, and we learned a lot from getting to watch Medford go through this first, so I feel pretty confident in it.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Kaplan.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Chief. If we can go back to one of the, to those, the examples, exactly. And I noticed, I remember those examples from the, from, I think, maybe the February When you presented to us, I mean, as you know, I've been skeptical of the factual base that presents a problem that we're trying to solve, and then whether the actual proposal, is there any evidence that that proposal will solve the problem? So on the factual base of the problem itself, I understand that this is your attempt to try to provide that and that you've done that. I'm a little puzzled in that, in arguing for a Cap East, an ELEA, a second ELEA, you pointed to the success of the Cap West ELEA over a dozen years, and now you're pointing to failures, it's not as good as it should be, or, you know, it's not so successful. After all, as I'm a little puzzled about that. Let me, please let me finish my question. So I'm a little bit concerned about that, that the goalposts seem to be moving, and where are we going after this? I also noticed from these seven examples that five of the seven examples are from Cap East that didn't even exist in 2024. So I don't know how the fact pattern would have changed if there are three qualifying violations in the area that is today Cap East. You know, maybe the behavior of the individual might have been different, I don't know. You've got two examples from Cap West, so there you may say that, you know, the fact that the behavior pattern wouldn't have changed, but it's a little, bit of a stretch to me to ask me to draw an inference from a ELEA that didn't even exist, and presumably the ELEA does exist in order to change behavior. Well, this didn't exist, so the behavior wouldn't have changed, so I'm not sure that I would follow your logical thought there. And then the other information that I'd be looking for, frankly, and I've been saying this all along, and we've got, we should have a dozen years of data on the Cap West, is what happened to these individuals? What sort of violations did they commit out of the ELEA? Did this just move people out of the ELEA and they commit a crime, you know, two blocks away? Maybe they did, maybe they didn't, I don't know. You've never really answered that question. We have 12 years of that, and I'm not seeing any real effort to use that data to draw a valid policy inference in order to decide that this is a problem and that this is actually a solution that's going to solve it, because it could just move people to someplace else. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. You haven't told me that it hasn't. You haven't shown me any data on that. So those are my questions. I just don't see the, you know, can you provide a bit more of an evidence base that this is actually a problem that we're going to solve, or is this a solution looking for a problem?
I'll try to be responsive to all of those questions. I will say all day long that I think the ELEA tool downtown has been a success. I think that it can and hopefully will be part of the success in Cap East. Just because something is a success doesn't mean that it is without fault and is without room for improvement, and that's what we're doing here. I respect that you are approaching this, as all seven of you are, from your perspective, and I respect frankly, Counselor, that you and I are probably never going to see eye to eye on this, and that's fine. As I said at the beginning of this presentation, I think that giving officers constitutionally defensible tools to be most reactive to chronic negative behavior with judicial review is in and of itself, on its own face, a good thing, a good tool to give to the officers. Regardless of when a cap was or was not established, these are examples of if this tool had been in place back then and we could have used it most effectively, perhaps we could have avoided these future negative incidents from these individuals. So I think that these examples stand regardless of whether or not an ELEA was in place. And where is, where or what negative behavior is happening after somebody is expelled? I don't have an answer to that, but I'm also not going to get, well, I'm not going to suggest that we mire ourselves in a lack of progress and a lack of trying to address something because we don't have the perfect tool to address it. If we expel somebody from an ELEA and they go two blocks out of the ELEA, have we solved the problem? No, but we have very arguably solved one problem, and we are addressing the known negative behavior in one geographically defined part of the city. So this person A that I referenced, and I said, I think I know who this is, he's in talent now, as far as I understand. So has the problem gone away? No, but he's not contributing to what I think I have demonstrated in data that is attached to this from back presentations, the steady increase in negative unlawful behavior specifically in Cap East. He had contributed to that. And is the, is the problem completely answered in a holistic sort of way? No, but he isn't contributing to it in Cap East anymore, and so there's some level of a victory there. And beyond that, Counselor, I don't know how else I can say it. I respect your position, and I respect that I haven't been able to give you the data that's going to convince you, but I don't know that I'm ever going to be able to do that to your satisfaction.
I think that's a fair point, because I think you've been presenting the same information, you know, a few different times, and it's, I've said it's not satisfactory, I've asked the questions for additional information and I've not seen anything further. So either you don't have the data or you're not able to analyze it, or you analyze it and find something, you come to a different conclusion.
Respectfully, you're choosing to not see the data the same way that I and some others are, and that's your choice, it's your prerogative. Frankly, I think that there are other people on this dais that are convinced of the data, and that there are people in the community that are, but if anybody that's part of this conversation chooses to not see it the way that I see it, there's nothing I can do to convince you to see it the same way.
Counselor Bloom.
Yeah, thank you. Kind of want to go back a little bit to what Counselor Duquesne was asking about a fee for an appeal and that there isn't one. And something that I thought, if this body so desires, to include language like that in the pamphlet handout, because I think a lot of times people are thinking, I don't know if I want to appeal, I don't think that I can afford that. It would be helpful to have language that says, A, you know, there is no fee to appeal, this is the process, go ahead and do it. So yeah, I just wanted to add that in. And then the question, if I could, kind of get to the meat here. One of the conversations about the new ordinance and looking at the map talks about kind of stretching out a little bit in front of the little park area that's in front of the library. Is that part of what's moving forward? I know that was part of a discussion a few meetings ago at this point.
It's, sorry.
I'm just, that's a different conversation.
Sure.
About the boundaries of the ELEA, and I think we want to stay on the question of changing the structure.
Oh, great.
Okay. Counselor Duquesne.
Thank you, Mayor. So looking at the questions here, if, before I ask my question, well, no, this is a question too. And I know that this is a conversation for another time, an elaborate conversation for another time. However, since we are talking about ELEA, just for clarity question, the night lawn is not in the ELEA, is that correct?
That is correct, and violations around camping ordinances are not qualifying offenses for expulsion.
Okay, that's, so, thank you. And then I was looking at this information that was in the packet, and we'll elaborate on that at another time, but it says here scattered rubbish is a violation, a qualifying violation. And so something that I see is on Tolman Creek, there's a bus stop, and we used to have a trash can there. And now the trash can is gone, so maybe this isn't for you, Chief, but, well, we used to have a trash can there and now it's gone, and it's, it looks terrible. And one of our residents there, she emailed me, took a picture and texted me this picture, and it was terrible how it's right there next to the bus stop by Bymard and Tolman Creek, and it was trashed. And so I am liaison for RVTD, the bus, and I asked them, I said, did you guys take the bus, the trash can away? They're like, no, the city did. So now my question is, why did we take that trash can away?
I'll have to talk to RVTD, as the trash cans at the bus stop are RVTD's, so unless there are one that we've put in and has disappeared.
It used to be there, and then it was gone.
What type of trash can?
And I think it was just a.
Recyclable.
Oh, thank you. Because.
So it sounds like this is another question offline, but Counselor Duquesne, did you have a question for the chief about what is rubbish?
No.
What does that mean, that violation? What does that mean, that violation?
Well, I think that because if someone is there, and something that I think Counselor Kaplan brought up, you know, a respite, or where do people go? And if somebody's just hanging out at the bus stop, waiting for the bus to come, or maybe taking a breather, and there's trash all over this bus stop, and I just don't want to get anyone get a citation because they're there. And I saw this really quick, thank you, Mayor, is that a question about trespassing is really high. And so the trespassing, and what does that look like, and how does an officer approach that when someone, you know, maybe they don't know that they're trespassing, we have to read the room and see our audience. And I just would want everyone to have the ability to live with dignity, and how is that handled? Because I did see trespassing was way up there.
So for an officer to issue a citation or take enforcement action, they would have to have some information that somebody was, that person was actually scattering rubbish, and not just amongst scattered rubbish. And I'm confident that they would not make that leap without having some firsthand information about it. The matter of trespassing is, trespassing is one of the most frequent charges or complaints in that part of the city. It could be a qualifying non-person misdemeanor under the proposed ordinance. For how the trespassing plays out is that the officer, to take action, has to be able to substantiate that the person has been given some reasonable warning that they are trespassing. And one example that I've used in the past is that the front yard of my house is not fenced in, is not gated. So if I caught somebody pitching a tent in the front yard of my house, or they could just walk up there without climbing over a gate, without going through a locked gate that they'd have to probably break or pick the lock to get over, then I probably wouldn't be able to charge him with trespassing. However, the backyard of my house is fully fenced and is secured by two locked gates. And if somebody climbs over that area, it's a little bit easier for the officer to substantiate that they knew they were somewhere where they were not supposed to be. So that's an example of trespassing. It is certainly more involved than you're somewhere you're not supposed to be, here's your handcuffs, or here's your ticket. The officer has to substantiate somehow that the person was given the ability to comply. That could be through signs, through forewarning, through some totality of circumstances. But the crime has to be established and not just assumed that, you know, the officer has to be able to prove the knowledge, the intent in court. And until that proof is there, they can't take action.
Thank you.
So we're going to move on now to public comment. Go ahead, Counselor Kaplan.
Yeah, thanks, Todd. I wanted a question that's not on the same topic that I asked about before. It's about the process. In the draft ordinance, you have 10.120.3, process to initiate a civil expulsion. The first step in the process is to provide notice. The officer provides notice. I'll wait for you to look at it, to find it.
Yes, I'm there.
The first step is the officer provides notice to the charged individual of the date, time, and location that the officer intends to request the expulsion. So you explain that. Then there's steps two, steps three, that talks about what happens. And then the, item four is my question. The expulsion order shall be effective upon personal notice. Is that personal notice, the notice upfront, or is that personal notice after the judge makes the expulsion order?
Last part first, it's personal notice after the judge makes the expulsion order. So if a defendant chooses to not participate in their own expulsion hearing, and the judge issues an order, the officer cannot take action on that order because the person has not been advised of the order.
Okay.
So the person would have to be given the chance to comply. For the first part of that, you'll see in the packets that at somebody's request, we modified the language on the ELE pamphlet, so it's not so legal heavy, and it just breaks it down in a more simplified manner. And the intention is to give out a modified pamphlet for cap east or west, wherever the offenses have occurred, at every step of the way. And hey, you're drinking in public again. If you continue to do this, this might happen to you. Here it's spelled out very simply in document that on this date, this ticket was given, this literature was given, the process was explained, so that when we do get further down the list, when the officer comes into this courtroom and says, Your Honor, this is all of the notifications I've been given, or I have given, I've given the defendant a chance to appear here. Either the person is or is not there, I'm asking for you to issue an expulsion order. Again, in that person's absence, it would not take effect until they are notified of it.
Thanks.
Yes.
I just had a follow-up question that came up from Counselor Kaplan's question. We're under appealing the ban. It says you can ask for a hearing within 10 days of getting expelled from an ELEA. But say I'm expelled from an ELEA, and I don't find out, I'm not notified until day seven after the judge has expelled me. Does that mean I have three days, or does it mean I have 10 days from the time I'm notified? Because we might want to change that in the brochure.
I'd be in favor of changing it to 10 days from the time you're served with the expulsion order.
And that's the intent when it becomes effective, so it's not actually an order until they've been given the notice. So...
Yeah, we might want to clarify that language, though.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we have three people who have signed up to speak this evening, Rich Rodi, Linda Adams, and Debbie Nicewonder. You will each have three minutes. You'll come up to the podium here. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Speak into the microphone, if you would. And again, you will get a chime, notice, a sound when you have 20 seconds left. Please complete your statements by the time that you have completed that. If you have not yet signed up to speak and would like to, the sign-up forms are up against the back wall, and you'll put them in this black tray here for Alyssa. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Rich Rodi, 124 Ohio. I'm here to strongly urge you to vote against this current proposal for an exclusion zone, and in fact repeal the previous exclusion zone. I'm a member of two interfaith organizations. One is the Sacred Organizing Coalition. That's the T-shirt I have on today. It's a statewide coalition of faith groups that are working for immigrant justice and for climate change and those kinds of issues. But they've got a great T-shirt, and on the back, if you can see it, it says, "For an organ that is open for everyone, that everyone belongs." And belonging is such a great value in faith communities. And this ordinance is exactly the opposite of belonging. So I'm not going to go into all the confusion that's in that ordinance, but really say that the values that that promotes for our city are absolutely ones that, in my faith, we don't support. I also went to look at the issues and the information about community policing. I think we kind of ascribe to that. We kind of think we're doing that. And I went and looked at the principles of that. And one of them, one of the central ones, is building trust with the people that you serve. And this is absolutely going to destroy the trust between the homeless, which it is clearly targeted at, and the police. And so many people who are otherwise going to need the support of the police are going to be not looking for a trusted person to help them, but see them as people that are only there to move them out of town. Thank you.
Linda Adams, Oak Street, Ashland. Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for your time. This iteration of the ELE ordinance is a convoluted law that simply criminalizes homelessness, and yet has been presented to our community as a tool for the police to fulfill their duty and make our community safer. But I ask you to consider what this tool is actually doing. The ELE is not a tool for safety. It is a policy that effectively criminalizes our most vulnerable neighbors. It creates a visible divide and fosters a hostile environment. It pushes the symptoms of our city's challenges, homelessness and poverty, into the shadows rather than addressing the root causes. Our police department, who we trust to protect and serve, is being put in an impossible position. They are placed as a barrier between individuals in crises and the supportive services they desperately need. The ordinance asks them to criminalize our neighbors, to issue citations and exclusions before they, or more appropriately, social service agencies have a chance to work with them and provide pathways to stability. This approach is not only morally and ethically flawed, it is also a legal and financial mistake. My initial written testimony provided this morning of this ordinance raises serious constitutional questions about due process, cruel and unusual punishment, and even double jeopardy. The city of Ashland could be opening itself up to legal challenges. Furthermore, studies have repeatedly shown that criminalizing homelessness is far more expensive than providing housing and support services. The costs associated with police enforcement, court proceedings, and jail time are substantial and do not solve the problem. The ELE ordinance is a policy failure. A compassionate approach centered on providing resources and pathways to stability is not only more humane, but also a more physically responsible and effective long-term solution. Let's not ask our police department to criminalize our marginalized. Let's not push the problem from one neighborhood to another. Let's instead work together to build a community that is inclusive and supportive, one that helps its most vulnerable members rather than criminalizing them. Let's focus on compassion, not on criminalization. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda, that was well said. I don't think I can top that. Thank you. My name is Debbie Nicewonder, Ashland resident, and I too am against civil expulsions. You know, first off, I wanted to kind of go back in the history of our expulsion. We came up with expulsions in June 2012. Okay, that was downtown. And then November 2015, we had to expand it to the front lawn of Lithia Park because folks moved there. Okay, that's to build Patton Garden. The next, we had to expand it again to the parking lot across from Stop &amp; Shop. Because all we're doing is moving people. We're not really accomplishing much. I also don't agree with the examples of negative behavior. You know, it's open, these are very minor infractions, and yes, it is negative, but if we had an inclusion zone, maybe some of this wouldn't be occurring. If we're going to do expulsion, exclusion, then we need inclusion. It's just a no-brainer, as far as my head thinks. Also, we haven't seen any data on the civil expulsions that have occurred in the night lawn and with the parks. Currently, in your packet, I gave you an example of a recent expulsion. It occurred in Garfield Park. It was for a dog license. This person was cited for dog license and given an expulsion for Garfield Park and the Grove. I don't know where we came up with the Grove as part of an expulsion zone. This whole concept of officer discretion and giving the police the ability to do their job is going to create conflict. Okay? Also, the appeal, we did file an appeal on this, and I would encourage any one of you to attend the appeal process. It's going to be on August 12 at 1:30, right here. It took a while for us to figure out the appeal. The process has to be put in place sooner than later. Oh, crap. I'm going to, I critique the ordinance. I'm going to give that to you at another time. You know, three minutes isn't enough. But I just want to say, you know, we're on the wrong path. This is going to create the inability for people to not get housing and employment, and that's not what we want. And...
Thank you.
Next, it'll be civil commitments, and I'm not in agreement with that either.
Thank you. Christopher Nadeau.
Nadeau, N-A-D-E-A-U. I'm not prepared for this meeting, only because of what's happened in the last few days. I think I'll just be as thoughtful as I can. I'm grateful to be here. I think that there's a rich network of social services agencies. I think that the police do a yeoman's job. But I think there's issues, and I think that there's issues just not in this county, but in the other county as well. And there's differences in opinions. There's local needs, local biases, and things of that nature. And to me, this is just, this is like too small. This is, it's not a waste of time, but there's such difficulties in this system. What I would recommend, or at least to look into, and I'm happy to be on some sort of advisory panel, or task force, or whatever you may call it, to address this issue. I'm recommending an ombudsman program for the homeless. I'm also recommending that a organization, or maybe we can start a 501(c)(6), to give thumbs down to organizations and businesses that are not friendly to the homeless. We've experienced tremendous, tremendous anger and frustration. And a lot of it's well put, and it's part of what the police are trying to do, which is keep your stuff tight. That being said, the tit-tat, petty pat, it's just, what we need is some sort of interagency council between the two counties that doesn't have teeth where you can cross-pollinate ideas. I'm also recommending that courteously, we'll make a visit, I would recommend that the, at least we have Democrats here, it seems to be, and that maybe the leadership in the House of Representatives write a letter and have him visit Medford Grant's Pass. Now, he is a Republican, you know, but he operates a very, I was a guardian angel for him in Staten Island. And there needs to be organizations that are doing outreach at night. The things that I've seen that have happened to people, my formal training is in health psychology. It's the determinants of health and wellness and why people get ill and sick. My expertise is in ethics and policy. All health policy and social services is cost, quality, and access. We have an access problem. Nobody talks to each other. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Kristin Joy, and I'm now closing the signups for public comment. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kristin Joy. I just wanted to submit a hope that, yeah, that there could be possibly more jobs or educational opportunities for those that are seeking them, that are currently struggling with housing and security. And I understand that a lot of the families here and a lot of the renters are also facing, you know, a lot of taxes and additional fees, and it's putting a lot of pressure on them. And so I am inclusive also of my thoughts toward them. I think that collectively, you know, there's a lot of opportunity for, especially considering the fires that have happened in Almeida and otherwise, perhaps, this was an idea I had a year ago or two, if the homeless during the winter could have a hillside, and we could take some of the cars that were apprehended from them, from people towed, and we could reappropriate them to a hillside and allow for families to have a night or something in cars that have been converted, maybe with solar on a hill, in exchange for a token that they receive, but they must then plant two trees. Then we could move that hillside the next season to another place, and we'd have trees growing. And that was just one concept I had, but... it, with knowledge that that's where I reside after incidents, which put me in kind of a really difficult position, I want to support and submit to authority. I want to also understand that there are residents that are paying a lot of money to be here, but I don't think that it's appropriate sometimes for the property owners to be the ones that are influencing directly the actions thereof of certain officers and otherwise. So I think that we should all have the best idea for the children, and yeah, a safe place for them to be in a park where there is no bathing, like I've seen at Medford. That's not acceptable. I really appreciate, you know, the why I'm saving a place for people, to have a gym and access there. There's a lot of opportunities for collective, you know, communities to have food. That's wonderful, too. We need self-sufficiency, and the continuation of more citation upon citation of just for existing. I think we're beyond that.
Thank you. Thank you. So we need to be able to move on to our next agenda item. I think we've had all of our questions asked and answered. Usually, I start on one of the corners, but that's probably not always fair, so we're going to go to the middle. Counselor Dale, would you start, and then we'll come around this direction and finish up with Counselor Sherrell. Are you interested in this coming forward to council as an ordinance?
Absolutely, yes, I am.
Counselor Bloom?
100%.
Counselor Kaplan?
No.
Counselor Duquesne?
Yeah. Can we make changes to it? Or?
You can. We'll have a discussion at council, but this will, this would be for staff to bring it forward. Counselor Hanson?
I can't give a yes or no. I can give you a perspective.
Would you like to see it come back in ordinance form, in the ordinance forum here in a business meeting is what we're looking for?
Yes.
Counselor Sherrell?
Yes.
Okay, so we will see you all back in front of the council at a business meeting.
Is there any timeliness on this, or do we want to cement that, or just when we can work it in?
I say when we can work it in.
I actually have an objection to that.
Go ahead.
I would like to see this back within two business meetings personally.
So the council would have to agree to that?
I would, too.
I would agree to that, Mayor.
Counselor Sherrell?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we move on to agenda item number two.
All right, our second item tonight, given all of the controversy out there about the upcoming union contracts and the unrepresented resolution that's coming forward, we thought it would be a good time to review those tonight in preparation for the vote tomorrow. So Director Taylor is here from Human Resources and myself, and we are going to do a quick overview of some slides on how we ended up with what you see in the packet, and then we are happy to answer any questions. So I'm going to hand it over to Molly here for process and overview, and I will come back for the kind of long-term fiscal analysis. Thank you.
Mayor, real quick.
Yes, Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, just a quick question. I think that it's most appropriate that we separate these conversations, and that's something that we'll be discussing tomorrow night as well. I certainly will be bringing it up. So I just request, and of course, if this council agrees, that for tonight's presentation, that we address the union conversation. We can ask those questions, work through that process, and then move to the next one so that they're not conflated. They are completely separate items. One is negotiated and bargained, the other is just brought forward to council. So that would seem the most appropriate to me, and that would be my request.
So this, since this is a study session, and you all have put together a presentation, it may or may not be as simple as that to separate these two issues, so?
Yeah, I think, once we get the slides up here, there's a slideshow at the bottom, start from beginning. You'll see the reason they are combined is because in 2022, they all came forward that way, so we're mimicking that same council communication as before. And so we're happy to separate, and they are separated to some extent, as in the packet, but there is some analysis that was done together, like the impact on fund, because the funds have lots of people in them from various groups. And then we also need to keep in mind that the direction was kind of to be equal across all employees, and so that is what we've implemented here, and so we'll do our best, given the slides that we brought. But we're happy to take questions about specific CBAs and the resolution, of course.
So if we can get through the presentation, if there's a natural pause point where most of the union contract elements have been, you know, most or all of them have been presented, and there's a natural pause point to ask questions specifically about the union elements, and then move on to the unrepresented pieces, is that a possibility? I want to find that out before we decide if that's what council wants to do.
So we made the slides how the slides are, so.
But is there, is there a, is it possible to separate those in the discussion this evening?
Yeah, I think there's an opportunity, there's an opportunity there.
Counselor Hanson?
Yeah, and, but with all due respect, I mean, this is a study session, and I was hoping we could get it all out on the table here so we don't have any surprises for tomorrow. So with all due respect, Counselor Bloom, I think this is the place where I want everything laid out for me personally, so I'm the best prepared for tomorrow. So I think whatever's here, whatever we want to talk about, we should, we should flush it all out. That's, that's my perspective.
So we, before we make any changes, request to the, how it's presented, I want to get thoughts from counselors. Do you want to have it presented as they have developed the presentation, or do you want it separated?
Yeah, my concern is, I think as long as there would be ability, and I understand it's kind of difficult during a study session, but as long as there's an ability to be able to pause if there is a, if there is a question from council as to what would be the differences between the two, I just don't want to blow by those. That would be my concern.
Counselor?
Yeah, I'd like to see them separated for sure tomorrow, however they want to present them today, I think we can ask all the questions that we need. That's my perspective right now.
So separated today?
It doesn't matter today. I think tomorrow, it's imperative that it's separated for the trust of the public. Today, we can ask our questions in any order, and I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. And we have yours. Counselor Duquesne?
I too, I understand that it's put together already, however, and to be able to ask questions separately, it's important that they are separated when we move forward tomorrow. I would prefer today, but it's already together, so.
Okay, Counselor Kaplan?
I'd rather have them all together today as we're discussing it. I think the presentation will be illuminating, and tomorrow, I'm happy to have them separated. In fact, we always have the opportunity to make separate motions in any case, so.
Okay. So then we'll go ahead and carry forward with it as you have presented, and, and we'll make sure that we get as many of our questions in this evening as we can. Go ahead.
Molly Taylor, HR Director. So at the August 5th council business meeting, we will be asking you to approve three collective bargaining agreements and a resolution outlining employment conditions for unrepresented employees. Back on August 16th of 2022, this was the motion that was set forth and approved by council three years ago. So they were together, just as a note. The timeline for bringing this forward, August 16th, 2022, council approved prior agreements covering the past three fiscal years, so '22 to '25, for everything being brought forward. Council funded a compensation and classification study during the 2325 biennium budget process. May 6th, we had an executive session along with May 20th, and May 20th, the comp and class study was also presented to council. And then June 17th, the resolution was tabled for tomorrow. So just a quick overview of the collective bargaining process. Near the end of the agreement term, the city receives a letter from the union requesting to open negotiations. The union typically presents contract changes and compensation requests based on union feedback, union member feedback. And then over several months, the city and the union meet to discuss and negotiate terms for the upcoming agreement. And once a tentative agreement is reached between the city and the union, the union members, the union returns it to the union members to hold a vote to either approve the tentative agreement or return to the bargaining table for additional sessions. And then once the union votes to approve the tentative agreement, then it is brought before council for consideration and a vote. And then we base the nonrepresented resolution on those negotiations because we kind of want to keep all employees similar, or as similar as we can depending on industry. Some background information for you, in 2022, our turnover rate was 17%. 2023 and 2024, we held steady at 8%, which is average for municipalities. This year, just through July, we are already at 9%. I put in the median wage for a four-person household. This is based from the Census Bureau. Jackson County, you can see, is 103,000 roughly. Ashland is 143, rounding up. And then the unrepresented staff is 92. And then for the city of Medford, I do understand that these are not like to like, but I took their nonrepresented group versus our nonrepresented group. And the reason I put this in here is simply because while they are not a comparable, they are a competitor, and we do lose probably over 90% of our resignations, employees are going to Medford. So now, Medford is a different municipality. It is larger, so it does make sense that Medford is trending higher. However, Ashland does offer different services. I mean, we have electric, our own electric, we have water, we have, you know, a regulated, federally regulated dam. So just to get a picture of what we are looking at as far as our competition in the area. Here, we have the summary of average wage increases. So for 2025, there, there is no COLA offered. There are no raises offered. This is a wage adjustment to get employees to mid-market for their respective position based on comp and class. And then we have a 2% COLA in '26 and a 2% COLA in '27. So as you can see, I think we lost titles here. Trying to remember which one. I think, okay, so we have electric here. Now, again, this is, it's a different industry, so it is going to trend different than the others, because it is very specialized. But 2025, the average is 5%, '26 and '27 are 3%. The next one is the laborers. 2025, the wage adjustment is at 3.9%, and then the COLAs are 2% and 2%. Clerical, we have the average wage adjustment is 4% for '25 with COLAs of 2% and 2%. And then for the unrepresented, the wage adjustment average is 5% with a 2% and 2% COLA.
Counselor Kaplan? I mean, Hanson?
Are we asking questions now, or would, shall we wait till the end?
Let's get to the end.
Let's, let's get to the end, make sure we get all the way through.
Okay, thank you.
So I put together the compensation package comparison from the last updates we did, and these are similar to the resolution and the other contracts, the other CBAs. So COLAs in, from '22 to '25, we had 4, 4, and 3, so a total of 11%. CPI over that time was 15.7%, just as a note. Total COLAs for this next three years is 4%. The average wage adjustment is 4.475%, so a total of 8.5%, rounding. We had our HRA VIBA increase last round of 1%. This time, we are increasing it by half a percent. Deferred Compensation, there was no change. This time, we're increasing it by $50 per month. Longevity Pay was added last time. We have no changes for this time. Last time, we had no personal days. We are adding three personal days in there this go-round, and we have taken surge recommendation to allow for the flexibility around various religious holidays, so allowing employees that. And we've also added the Christmas Eve holiday. And then the step increases between each step, the average is about 5%. With the recommendation of the comp and class, that would be a uniform 3% for everyone. I will go back, the 2022 to 2025 step increase, depending on the CBA, it was, it ranged from 2% up to double digits between steps. So we tried to make that uniform across all employees. Okay, these graphs, we have four different positions up here. Top left, the writing is very small, is the wastewater supervisor. The next one over on the top is a Park Tech 1. Bottom left is a department head, and bottom right is an accounting analyst. And this is to show the difference between the old salary schedule and the new salary schedule. So with the orange line, that is the old salary schedule, and that is where we had four steps for every position with the exception of department head. And you can see there's a very steep increase, which is the five-ish percent increase between steps, and then it levels out a bit, and that is just taking into account 2% COLAs then on after. The blue line is not such a drastic increase and level, so that is the 3% between the steps and then a 2% COLA thereafter. I think I have explained that as best I can.
Yeah, I think there was some question about, you know, what the old schedule looked like compared to the new schedule, and I think it's very dependent on the position where that person would have fallen on the market and how the comp and class is adjusting for that market. The goal is to, one, extend people's retention so that they have movement for a prolonged period of time that's more on par with other jurisdictions by having more steps than just four or five, so bringing that more in alignment with the norm, as well as, you know, demonstrating the...
So with the orange line, that is the old salary schedule. And that is where we had four steps for every position with the exception of department head. And you can see there is a very steep increase, which is the five-ish percent increase between steps. And then, it levels out a bit, and that is just taking into account 2% COLAs then on after. The blue line is not such a drastic increase and level, so that is the 3% between the steps and then a 2% COLA thereafter. I think I have explained that as best I can.
Yeah, I think there was some question about, you know, what the old schedule looked like compared to the new schedule. And I think it's very dependent on the position where that person would have fallen on the market and how the comp and class is adjusting for that market. The goal is to, one, extend people's retention so that they have movement for a prolonged period of time that's more on par with other jurisdictions by having more steps than just four or five. So bringing that more in alignment with the norm, as well as, you know, demonstrating the curvature with that 3% versus the 5 over time. Now, of course, the new schedule is going to cost more because we're giving people raises, so they're not going to be together. But we just wanted to kind of show that trend line across time. So when we look at the impact of both wage and benefits, when we're thinking about employees, you know, we're looking at kind of across all of our funds. So depending on who you are in either the CBAs or the resolution, you are going to impact various funds. So when we look at those total packages and how they are going to hit, I'm, for example, accosted to several funds versus someone who might just be in the general fund. We are seeing what that input, impact looks like. Of course, the other side of that is finding a way to cover that impact. So of course, the general fund has the most people in it, so it's going to take the biggest, biggest hit. But then, you know, you'll see other funds also are contributing to this. So when we're thinking about, we're going to get into kind of like one-time fixes versus long-term fixes here. But, you know, the table next to the general impact is how are we going to move forward here? And so, working with department heads, kind of assessing, you know, knowing that staff are the ones who provide the service and we need to retain them or be able to recruit them, how do we balance this? So for the general fund, part of that is being done by either delaying hiring or eliminating a finance manager position. So part of what both finance and parks have done is taken a look at what is our, you know, manager-to-line-level ratio? And how do we make sure that we are in line here? And so, we are seeing adjustments. Parks will continue to do this through the biennium. They're doing a quite, quite a large restructure. And as that goes on, we'll have a little more forecasting for what that monetary effect will be. In the meantime, there is some delay in hiring. We did see some healthcare premium savings. So as you know, healthcare, you know, we have an estimate when we go into the budget season, and then we get kind of the final numbers post-budget. So it wasn't quite as high as we had anticipated, almost, but not quite. So we do have some savings there. We've also made the decision, we fully funded our paid leave Oregon plan. This is the unfunded state mandate to offer paid leave for employees for qualified leave purposes. We were fully funding that before. We have since insured that, and so that realizes just quite a bit of money from that insurance. And then, we have reduced our professional services line in HR. This is a line where we put money aside for things like professional recruitment and things like that. If we find this line runs short, we will be coming back for contingency if we need to use funds for recruitment and things like that. So that's the general fund. The electric fund, Director McBartlett did just execute a clean fuel credit sale, and that resulted in quite a big revenue income from that. We were holding these fuel credits. The market was good. He executed that sale. This will cover the IBW CBA, as well as our conservation group proposed raises. You will see the electric fund, or the electric department, excuse me, come forward with rate adjustments moving forward. So the cost of personnel is incorporated into those rate adjustments, so that will, moving forward, pending council action, be rectified. You'll also see, depending on the electric rate discussion and impact of the general fund through franchise and the electric tax fee. And so, that will be another revenue stream that we'll need to kind of account for. The water fund, we had it in the budget to replace a generator. Given the timing of the new treatment plant, leadership in Public Works has decided to not move forward with that generator replacement. We've had it assessed, and it will keep going for the time being until we have our new plant. And so, we don't think we need that capital expense. And then, you know, the water fund continually with the rates are adjusted to cover personnel expense. Wastewater fund, that's a mix of healthcare premium savings that have hit them. And talking to Director Fleury, a reduction in their professional services, as well as looking at their vacancy rate, we have had quite a high turnover in wastewater. Wastewater and water operators are increasingly difficult to find and retain, and so we are seeing quite a bit of vacancies savings there. The wastewater fund will be coming to council for a rate adjustment, and so that will have an impact on personnel long-term as well. Same with stormwater. Healthcare premium savings in that fund, as well as a reduction in professional services, you'll see Director Fleury come forward with a stormwater fee adjustment as well. Time is due for that, and that will impact personnel services. The street fund, talking with the street folks, they have recommended delaying a vehicle replacement. You'll see that in the telecommunications fund as well. Part of what we're looking at is our fleet as a whole. Are there opportunities to reduce or share fleet vehicles that we haven't done in the past? And do we need as many? This will be part of the conversation as well, as we're looking into our facilities assessment and long-term, where we're all going to be potentially located, because that will have an impact on vehicle needs for sure. And then, Chad has just renegotiated our bandwidth contract, which has resulted in savings there, both this year and next year, which helps the telecommunications fund with that coverage. So some of the things that I've touched on are one-time versus ongoing. So when we're looking into the future beyond these two years, because what you'll find in your packet is kind of, you know, the third year is to be determined, right? Because that hits the next biennial budget. Obviously, the city needs to continue looking to its financial future, and here are some ways we're doing that moving forward. So appropriate utility rates forthcoming, as I mentioned, electric, wastewater, and stormwater. Regular rate adjustments ensure proper funding of enterprise funds, but also have an impact on the general fund through franchise fees. So those will be coming to council. A lot of them had been delayed due to circumstances prior, so keeping them on a regular cadence as recommended is one way that has a positive impact on the city finances. Right-size staffing. So we mentioned a couple of positions delayed or eliminated. We are looking at our balance of technology versus manual processes. So we do have payroll software, utility building software coming online over the next year. We are continuing to look into AMI, as well as have a discussion around pesticides with parks. That is a direct impact on the number of park staff that we need, is how we maintain our parks. Ratio of manager to frontline staff, we've mentioned before. You know, finance and parks department are currently adjusting, but we'll continue to look at all of our departments to make sure we have the right ratio of staff to the service level provided, both manager and frontline, as well as to the service level that the community is looking for. Fleet evaluation, as I mentioned, ongoing savings there with our right-size fleet, whether we are eliminating or not replacing. We don't have to incur those maintenance costs with our fleet department. That is a way that we can look to be more sustainable moving forward. Vendor contracts, these have a limited ongoing, depending on the timeframe. So looking at all of our vendor contracts that we have long-term, so the bandwidth is a good example of this. But having discussions with our vendors for price adjustments, evaluation of whether we need those contracts in place moving forward, that's one area that we're evaluating. The building fund, building department fund, excuse me. So we are taking a look at this. The state has put a mandate out there that the building fund operate as an enterprise fund. So that would put 4.7 FDEs that are currently in the general fund into their own fund. Brandon is looking at this. We need to do some more analysis on what the impact is going to be in terms of building, permitting, as well as any sort of way to prop up that fund to make sure that it is viable moving forward year after year to withstand any sort of changes in development over time. So, you know, unlike utility rates, which are kind of at a set cadence, you know, building, depending on what's going on in the community, kind of ebbs and flows. So we want to make sure that we're not having to expand and contract, which is very difficult over multiple years. So consideration of contractual services. One of, an example of this, but really what I'm talking about here is, you know, do we need an FTE or is it something that we can contract for? So with our finance manager, that position oversaw many elements of our audit. We are able to contract with Baker Tilly to do some of that work, which allows us not to bring on another FTE to handle that. So are there elements that we should look to kind of put outside that will allow us to maintain an appropriate staffing level, especially for things that kind of come and go on a regular cadence or are not a consistent need every day? Building consolidation and divestment. So you'll have some invites to some meetings on this prior to the study session, but this is the whole building study we've been doing about what is our level of upkeep needed for our building? What divestment of land and buildings should we be doing? This is important because all of our city-owned land and buildings require ongoing maintenance. So we have the potential to recruit one-time money through divestment of actual property, but then see savings with the ongoing maintenance that's required on these buildings. So if they're not necessary for city use, what's the best way forward there? Knowing the large impact the fire department has on the general fund in particular, working with the fire chief and fire staff to look at our single-role program over time, how that's doing, our fire staffing levels, as well as moving forward with the regional fire study. We'll be bringing that forward in September to discuss with council more on what that looks like and what the potential is going to be from there. And then, long-term financial planning. So taking an assessment of what are essential versus nonessential services and the community's service-level desire. So part of this is working through the strategic plan to see the level of service the community wants, as well as doing some modeling that is, you know, taking a couple of assumptions in place and adjusting those over time to see how we end up. Done. Okay, so that was my list. Sorry, guys, that was a long list. So with that, Molly and I are happy to answer any questions.
And is this, is the presentation complete at this point?
Yes, it is.
Yes, okay. All right. Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, thank you. If we could go back a slide, that'd be great. And I appreciate the memo that we got outlining the cost savings. This is the first time I'm seeing this, and it's difficult because it's, it would be great to really dive into a lot of this, but because it was never given to council ahead of time in the packet, I did not see the financial stabilization element. Is it in the business item? I just saw the cuts that were in there.
Okay. Well, still, we can kind of go through a few of these because what I see is kind of cannibalizing a few things, and it's really short-term impact. And so, I'm just kind of trying to figure out, what is the long-term goal? Have we modeled out over five years what this is? You know, specifically, what is the dollar figure, even a rough one, of what all of this is going to cost, including roll-ups? And how much is that going to cost over a five-year period so that then we can look at these ideas of financial stabilization? A lot of them kind of look like just discussions that are happening? And actually be able to pinpoint where the savings are and if there are savings?
So if I could just get a clarification here. So a five-year model of the cost of the CBAs and the resolution in total?
And all roll-ups.
And all roll-ups. So a point of clarification, so when we're looking at the fund impact, that's the total roll-up impact, is that that number, not just wages, it's wages and benefits? So I think, you know, we can make some assumptions. We could say we're on a 2% COLA increase for the next five years. Now, these are only, you know, two-year contracts, so we can see the fiscal impact there. So we can do that, or we can take kind of an average of CPI and expand that over the next five years. So we'd have to make some assumptions. We're happy to do that.
And that'd be great. And I'd love to see a comparison of that to what the savings are that are identified here and what those will be, as well as timelines and updates of when we're actually going to see finalized versions of this. Maybe these are farther along than a conversation and idea, but I think it would be helpful to show some confidence for me, certainly, and the public, to know that these are more than just kind of rhetoric that we're putting out, but there is actual concrete plans to achieve those objectives.
So the question, before we move on, is that a request of this council? Is the council? Because that's more than two hours' worth of work. And so, does the, maybe you can recap it, Counselor Bloom, so that we can?
Yeah, so I would like to see the total cost of these plans. So we've got the management resolution, the nonrepresented employees. We've got three unions. We still have some more unions to go and potentially a new union that will impact this. And what that total cost would be over five years, of course, there's a little bit of flexibility, given that two-year, three-year contracts. But I would like to see that benchmarked off of what this would look like financially, to see the comparable, to see that, let's put it this way, it's going to cost $10 to do all of these salaries over five years. We've identified $10 worth of savings, cuts, efficiencies to match that. And also included as part of that, clearly written kind of, you know, report, like you would do the city manager's report of, this is where we are timeline-wise on each of these objectives that we're trying to meet.
I wonder whether that is even possible to do at this point, but I want to understand from the council whether the council wants to ask for that. Thoughts, Counselor Dale?
I'll take a, maybe a similar track at this.
And I want, I also want to understand, everyone to understand that this is not the only question that council has. So what I'm looking for is, do, does this council want that depth of projections?
I would be interested in financial modeling on most of these bullet points. Yes, please.
Clarification question, is that going to be before we take action tomorrow, or is that ongoing after?
It would have to be ongoing after. I would, yeah, there's no way to do that in that time period.
Which is why, I mean, I mean, this is kind of the unfortunate predicament that we're being placed in here, is that there are a lot of outstanding questions, and we're being asked to make a large financial commitment, and we have done none of the backwork to find out how we're going to pay for it over a period of time. And my concern is that it's, it's cool, we're good for two years, and we'll figure it out at the next budget. And that seems irresponsible.
Counselor Hanson?
Yeah, may I elaborate a little bit and not just a thumbs up, thumbs down? This is, this is great work. First of all, I appreciate the data, and I love our stabilization plan. In your presentation, Molly, in the packet, I read a lot of numbers, and I get them all. But my, my ask is very parallel to Counselor Bloom's, which is, I would like to, I would just like to see an aggregated net-net type scenario. Give us a picture of what these costs and what the savings are going to do for us on an annual basis. And I too would like to see a rough projection over several years. And I'm, I'm coming at it from a very similar standpoint, which is like, there's the things that we must, we must do with our negotiations. And that seems more black and white for discussion than a decision tomorrow. But I'd like to take all this great work and build on it and see where we're pointing the ship and where we're going to find funding and where we're going to potentially find shortfalls. So for my vote tomorrow, I would love to have that information. I doubt we're going to get it. But, but I would like to take all this great work and give us more of that CFO snapshot with a two- to five-year, I'm sorry, a two- and five-year projection. I think we need to start looking at, you know, not only where we're going in this biennium, but, but where our, where our trajectory is on the outside of those two years. Short answer, yes, I would like to see more projections.
Counselor Duquesne?
I, I, I agree with what's already out there on the table. I don't see this happening by tomorrow. Therefore, looking at the long runway and the bigger discussion, because there is no plan for five years. And I don't want to see us back here the next biennium, having this same type of discussion with no prior information on how we're going to move forward with this. So I don't see this happening tomorrow, but the retreat that we've been talking about, I would love to see this in a longer conversation.
So in terms of, I think there's a couple of things happening here. One is, is that there are, whatever the agreement is done for the unions, will start on July 1st. It will, it will backdate to July 1st. But our staff need an answer. And so, that we, we have this in front of us because we are out past the contract timing for our unions. So we are, we are, we are in a circumstance where we have time considerations that I think push us to make a decision on these union contracts. Staff went forward and negotiated them according to council direction and have come back. So, so we need to understand that there is a timing issue here. So I, what I'm hearing here, and I'll get to you, Counselor Kaplan, is that there is an interest in that longer-term projections. an interest in that longer-term projections of where does this put us? But I have, I see real concern in pushing this out a significant amount. And did you have something?
Yeah, I just, I just want to caution, because as we all know, this is a study session, so it's a good time for information gathering, asking questions, but we don't want to enter into a debate as to the things that are on the table for tomorrow. I just, I see kind of, I see people getting excited to talk about that. It'll be a great topic for debate, but as Councilor Hanson said, this is a good time to gather information, ask questions of what exists, and then tomorrow, be there a motion made. That is the proper time for debate.
Okay. Councilor Kaplan?
Help.
I'm going to Councilor Kaplan first. Because we haven't heard from him.
Thanks, because I think the protocol is that we hear from each person first before having, you know, second, second comments. So thank, with respect to your question, Mayor, projections about the future are always useful, and I certainly would appreciate that. I feel considerably less concerned, because I believe that all of these cost estimates, and this is a question, I guess, sorry, question to Sabrina, I believe all these cost estimates are based on full staffing, 100% staffing, rather than the historically expected staffing, just as we budget full staffing. Are these cost estimates as if every single person that's in these positions is going to be in their position for the entire, not just this year, next year, and the following year?
Yes. So if we were to take into our, you know, our historic vacancy rates, you know, we have quite a large vacancy rate with turnover in terms of dollar savings. So, you know, there's additional funding there that's not recognized here.
Okay, so thanks. That's, that, thank you. That was my surmise for the answer to that question. So I don't feel quite as anxious about taking a decision, a timely decision for our staff, because right now, what's happening is our staff are not getting it, they're not getting a COLA, they're not getting an increase, and, you know, they're looking around and listening to us and saying, I don't know if these guys are going to prove, or when these guys are going to prove, any kind of increase for us to keep up with the, with the market. So I am interested in taking a decision tomorrow with information that we have. I think it's sufficient information for a decision tomorrow. But I am interested, of course, in looking, you know, greater deep, the financial stabilization information, there were two pages of it in the, in the packet, in both yesterday, both today's study session and tomorrow's business meeting. So, you know, yes, we can get more information about it. I appreciate the differentiation between ongoing and one-time effects, and I think we're going to have a pretty robust discussion of this as we go forward and really realize these kinds of financial stabilization efforts.
So we are past our seven o'clock point. We need to stay here, I believe, and keep going for an additional 30 minutes. So just so that I've got head nods around the room, that we're good with that? Okay. And Councilor Sherrill, have you spoken on this circle? Yes, you have.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilor Bloom?
Yeah, just to respond to the concern, all I asked was just that we get this information. I wasn't putting any timeline for tomorrow, we need to have it. I mean, I'm disappointed that we don't have that information ahead of this kind of a decision, but all I'm saying is just, we need to give staff direction that we need to have this back soon.
Go ahead. So I think, you know, one thing to recognize is by, you know, adjusting just the electric rates, we're looking at potentially half a million or over half a million dollars coming into the general fund. So, I mean, there's some big fish kind of hanging out there, but it's also going to be, you know, the systematic adjustment to how we do business, and that's going to take some time. And part of that is just changing the way that we have viewed, you know, the services the city provides, and that's a bigger discussion with council, so potentially at a retreat, but also in the study session. So we will continue to work on doing long-term financial projections with, you know, various assumptions, because we don't know, you know, three years from now, what the landscape is going to look like in terms of, you know, the need for employees, compensation, healthcare, things like that. And so, you know, we're going to continue to work on that. My whole point in saying that is there's going to be kind of this spectrum of potential, right? We're not, it's not going to be super clear, especially the more we get into the future, the less certain we are with how that goes. So just setting expectations around those projections.
Mayor, can I follow up with that?
Sure.
I just think that it's important to kind of just understand, keep in the back of your mind, yes, there's certainly some, some revenue that'll be coming in with utility rate increases if we decide to do that. So I think it's important that we really focus on the things that, you know, in terms of efficiencies and savings that you can find within the organization that are outside of the need of a council vote to do so. Because whether it's this council or future councils might not give you those tools, and we need to be prepared for that eventuality so that we can make sure that we're riding the ship properly going forward.
So that, that I think is a good highlight, Councilor Bloom, of the uncertainties that exist in a, in a projection like that. You know, with so many things that we are looking at in terms of efficiencies, in terms of our facilities, in terms of changing how we do business, in terms of the service levels that we are providing to our citizens from a variety of our programs. If we were simply planning to carry on as we always have, then that projection might be a lot easier, and we could see immediately what that delta is out over several years. But with all of the different initiatives that are happening, both internal to the staff and that will be coming to this, this dais, it's, that makes it very difficult to get clear, precise numbers early on. I think if I'm understanding correctly, as we move through these different discussions, and the ones coming here will be part of those, we will be able to circle in on better projections, understanding that the further we get out from where we are in any set of projections, the less certainty we can have, right? But what I'm hearing from this body today is that we want to make sure that as we go through these elements, that we are in fact plugging them into a longer-term financial model. Because what we're trying to do is to create a more sustainable future model, where we don't come to that cliff every two years and wonder how we're going to clear it. And so that, if I'm understanding that correctly, and if I'm understanding this group correctly, what we're saying is, as we move through these processes, we want to be plugging into longer-term projections. Am I understanding that correctly, Councilor?
Yes, very much. And I, you know, would be remiss if I, you know, earlier I was saying sooner than later, and I think that we need to give a deadline for that conversation. And to Councilor Duquesne's point about a retreat, I think we need to have a specific retreat around this conversation and nothing else, not added in, we're going to spend an hour on this, an hour on something else. We need to have the deep dive on this conversation of where we're going in the future and what that financial modeling looks like. And so I would propose that we have something scheduled between staff and council by October 1st, to at least have something on the schedule, and that that meeting shall take place before the end of this calendar year, so that we're going into the, kind of going in really into the middle biennium, already having done that work, so that when we have that meeting with the CBC mid-biennium that we've discussed, we've kind of already prepped for that, and then they can be part of that conversation as well.
Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, I mean, I know we have a balanced budget for these next two years. I know, I, this was a good presentation, I have enough information to make my decisions for tomorrow. What I wish I had right now was a little better clarity as to what our net-net is between our additional expenses with regards to human resources and our savings that have been just kind of outlined, sometimes with numbers and sometimes in generality from, from the other savings list. That's a heavy lift. I'm not asking for that tomorrow. I'm just concurring with my colleagues here that we're all looking for the sustainability of the city. I don't think we, we're in the same position as SOU. I don't think we're, you know, apples-to-apples with other organizations in our community that are under financial crisis. But we know that we're doing this in, in these times, and it's very much a difficult time for our city as well, just different. So I didn't mean to put a rush on this, like I need this for tomorrow, but I agree with all, all that's been said for our, for our future stability and our, and our planning.
And just a point of clarification. So this is the total impact from what we're seeing, and this is where we're getting that money. So it's a wash, right? So we're covering everything. So we're not looking for additional savings to cover these two years for these groups. So I just wanted to, that doesn't mean we won't do what council's asking. I'm just...
But, and just to follow up behind that, the, not, nothing that is on that list is a surprise. We've heard elements of all of those, those pieces. So my understanding is that we, even coming into this budget cycle, the understanding was that we would balance this year's budget, and then we would do the digging in over the next two years on that list that you've compiled here, and see where the cost savings is, where the efficiencies is, or where we can do things differently, or decide not to do some things so that we can get onto that structure. So that's, that is still in play, and that will involve various council retreats and specific sessions around that particular element. I think there's a way to, to track that list up against where we see the gaps coming, because rerunning citywide projections every time one of those questions is answered becomes very difficult. So I think what we're, I think we're on the same page here of being serious about moving through those elements and being, and really getting them into a longer-term projection so that we can understand what kind, you know, what kind of progress are we making in the longer term. Councilor Kaplan?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate Councilor Bloom clarifying his, his initial ask, because I did hear it as a, as something that was going to be, I thought you were asking, can we get this even before tomorrow, or failing tomorrow, you know, in the next, you know, few weeks? So hearing you say that you recognize that this is a longer, longer-term effort, I feel comfortable with the timeframe that, Councilor Bloom, you've laid out, starting to, you know, really dig into some of these things over the next six months. I'm quite confident, we've been talking about these things for some time, I feel very comfortable that we can realize some, some savings and some efficiencies in those areas. I'm confident that we are going to have the resources that are necessary to fund the, the personnel budget this, this year with these, with these savings that you've already identified. There is an outstanding question about the overall rough magnitude of the outstanding, the pending labor negotiations that you haven't mentioned, and it was a question that Councilor Bloom had as well. So I wonder if you could just speak to that, because that is going to be additional to this.
Yeah, so we do have the sergeants' union, which is five people, and we have the fire union. And so we've been working with both of those unions. We haven't reached agreement with either one, so I can't go into too much specification. But we are looking to make up the bulk of what the fire union is asking within the fire budget. And sergeants, with only being five, I'm confident we'll be able to, just through vacancy savings and the police department, would be able to cover that potentially, but we are continuing to work with those two unions.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't, I wasn't asking for really super specifics, obviously, so thank you for that. Order of magnitude.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone we haven't heard from? Derek Sherrill, or Councilor Sherrill?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much for putting some cuts in this. I had a question on slide five, if you could pull that back up, and it was in relation to four-person households compared to management salary. Can you just explain that? I was a little bit lost. And then a follow-up question to that would be, just a little bit of clarification on trying to hit midline for the McGrath report, and a lot of people I'm hearing from are showing models of our mid-to-top steps being higher than all of our comparators and not in line with. So I think you're probably the smartest person in the room to talk about that. But first is the, the median, the median wage for a four-person household. Is that unrepresented Ashland staff, four people in a household, or is that $1, $92,000 annual salary compared to a four-person household in our city and in our county? Please.
So that is assuming, I guess, all unrepresented would have a four-person household. So I took the spreadsheet of the salaries here and, that is on the website, and I took the median from this, understanding I don't have that information. I mean, I, the closest I can get is who's covered by health insurance, if it's one person or a full family, but even that's just covered individuals, it's not a household. So in talking with staff, the general census is four-person household when taking these, this information into account, so that's what I used. I could bring back other numbers, but that is, that is what I used. But you can see, let's see, I do have it here.
Yeah, when I, I just was wondering, because when I added up all the average clerical staff positions and multiplied that by four, it was a much higher number. So I was like, is that, is that helping or hurting us? Was kind of my question. I don't have any direction for you, I just needed a little clarification.
Okay, so I did, I did split it between frontline staff, supervisors, and executive management as well. So the $92,000 is the entirety of the nonrepresented, but I did split it out that way as well to get the median for each group.
And then, and how you got the median for the other two groups, for the county and for the city, you said you used Bureau of Labor and Statistics data and multiplied that by, or census data multiplied by four?
No, they have it broken down between one-person household...
You took it right off their chart?
Yep.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. And then the second kind of follow-up question was just the, the like-to-like comparables. I've just gotten a lot of emails where people are like, hey, they're, it's way higher than everybody else that we're compared to, our five up and five down. Here's the 10, and here's us, and we're higher in a lot of cases. And I don't know if the numbers are changing, I don't know if people are still spewing bad data. I just was wondering if you could quickly speak to that. Does the McGrath report data that we saw before and that we're still moving on still put us just around median, around 50% of average comparators?
Yeah, and I don't, that is information that they have as far as what numbers they pulled from all the comparators. I don't have those specifics. But, let's see, I'm trying to grab the... So in the nonrepresented resolution is a salary scale like this, and that is appendix B, I believe. And so I believe step four or five is what they have at the mid-market.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think people are taking the top step and comparing it to the mid and adjusting the numbers. Okay.
Yeah, and so, and nobody in the nonrepresented, except for maybe one person, is going to go from top step of the old schedule to top step of the new schedule.
Because that bridged more than the 5%?
Correct. Yes. So it's, it's not just the same step to the same step.
Thank you so much, and thank you for taking the time to put this together for us.
Councilor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. And Molly, just a couple of questions. I know that you'd mentioned earlier that negotiation's been going on for a while, kind of during budget season two. Two questions, can you, when, when did we wrap up and come to, we'll say, a tentative agreement with the unions, kind of date-wise? And then the other question I have, looking at the 2225 agreements that you put in the, in the, in the packet, they, they have signatures from the union in the, one is in September and one is in November. It was, and I know it was a different time, different place, different things, circumstances, but clearly in those, in those agreements, it was obviously backdated to July. And of course, there's other, you know, non, we'll say, non-potentially financial ramifications for whether that is or is not. But what, do you, any context on what happened back then and why those were signed and, and agreed upon and executed by council in the, in the September to November timeframe?
I don't remember that specifically. I do know that when we are negotiating with unions, we are dealing with potentially eight different schedules, eight different individual schedules. So trying to bring so many people together from all different parts of the city and the union representative can sometimes be a challenge. And so that, while we try to get this done as soon as possible, it is a challenge to bring all those people together to even sometimes sit at the table, as much as we try. So that can cause a delay. I don't know specifically why. Do you remember?
Yeah, so last round, we significantly rewrote all of the contracts, so they hadn't been updated for 15, 20 years. And so we had outside council... And so we had outside council helping us rewrite all of the contracts, and that took longer. They're in better shape now because of that rewrite, so it's a little quicker, as in like the ORS statutes they reference are up to date, things like that. So it did take longer last time because of that. This time, it was, because it's up to date, purely focused on operations and compensation, and less on ensuring the legalese was appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
I've got two other counselors on, and then I want to take public comment, and then we'll see if we have any more time for questions. Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, thank you, Molly. Real quick, what were the, the five cities up and five cities down that we compared with?
That's one of the spreadsheets. Let me find it in my packet of spreadsheets. I don't know if I printed that one. It's there. Thank you.
So five up, Roseburg, Klamath Falls, Milwaukee, Altamont, and Hayesville were unincorporated, so we did not use them. Down Lebanon, Sherwood, Hermiston, and Central Point. We also pulled additional comps from Corvallis, Eugene, Forest Grove, Grants Pass, Jackson County, Josephine County, Lakaswego, McMinnville, Medford, and Wilsonville. Part of this was trying to find like-for-like, given all of our utilities and the fact that we have fire and rescue.
So to help folks out, that those are the cities that they should be looking at and comparing, doing that mid-step, that step four comparison, to kind of have an idea of what, what the difference is.
Yeah, we also have electric, fire, parks, and public works-specific comps that we got for those particular ones, and sometimes those are a district instead of a municipal service. So in your packet, you will find kind of what jobs were compared to what, excuse me, what comps.
Great. And then, and then quick follow-up, I'm sure that a lot of my colleagues here can understand this concern of mine. Just for clarity, I was hoping that staff could read back the previous ask that we all made, so that we're sure that it is accurate to what we are requesting.
For, from this gathering?
Yeah, earlier when we talked about timeline and what we want to see in these projections, I think it would just be helpful to be sure that, you know, in six months, we're saying, hey, where's this thing, and it just kind of got lost.
So we'll, we'll do that right at the end. Counselor Kaplan?
Thanks, Mayor. Molly, I had a, I appreciate the, the effort that's been put into really trying to take a common approach to, to each one of the different bargaining units and to the, to the extent that possible, and the unrepresented. I, I remember that last week, or two, two weeks ago, or four weeks ago, I guess, when we looked at this, there was this proposal that if the, in placing the each staff, each individual in the appropriate place in the new scale, they would be placed on the step without having a decrease, but if the increase was less than 3%, that they would be given an additional, they'd be moved up an additional step. In what's come back to us now, I see it's a 2.5, if it's, if it's less than 2.5. The table is a little confusing, it, the, the column suggested it's less than 3%, but the heading is less than 2.5, and some of the language that's in there says 2.5. So I think what's happened is you've moved to a 2.5, less than 2.5, rather than less than 3. I'm wondering what, what, why was that, and what, how do we come up with, what, why, what's the science behind a 2.5 number, or a 3% number, or a 2% number for that matter?
So, yeah, the, having it be off the 3 and the 5 on the spreadsheet's my bad. I forgot, there was a little 3 in there. It was, the intention was always 2.5%, but we rounded it up to 3. So what I did was I went back, because it was brought to my attention that we had 3 on there. I took the spreadsheet, I bumped out the decimal on the percentage. Nothing changed, so the 2.5% rounded up is 3%. But for clarity purposes, we, it is 2.5%. And the reason for that is CPI this year is running about 2.78. So when people are getting placed on the salary schedule, we have some people that are getting no increase whatsoever. So right now, in our old salary schedule, we go out four decimal points. So for example, we have someone who makes $29.00 and points, 7, 8, 3, 9. The new salary schedule is to two decimal points, so it is 29.78. It is exactly the same. We do have some employees who will get no increase whatsoever. So understanding that some employees are getting a larger increase, and CPI is 2.78, we wanted to offer that additional step of the 2.5, which rounded up as 3. 2.78 rounded up as 3, so...
Because there's essentially no COLA for that year?
Correct, correct.
All right, so I do want to move on. We need to, we need to close up at 7:30. I'll take public comment from Linda Adams.
Is this on?
Yes.
Linda Adams, Oak Street, Ashland. The McGrath classification and compensation study for Ashland provides a critical and timely assessment of the city's human capital strategy. The study conclusively identifies a systemic issue of undercompensation and significant structural inconsistencies within the existing classification and compensation framework, a condition that has largely developed due to over a decade without a comprehensive review. The widespread market lag across nearly all positions, coupled with a fragmented system of 15 disparate salary schedules, has created significant challenges in both attracting and retaining qualified employees, as well as maintaining internal equity. The study's core recommendations, including the adoption of a unified, market-aligned, eight-step salary schedule, the establishment of a clear classification hierarchy, and the implementation of standardized annual adjustments, represent a fundamental and necessary overhaul. These proposed changes are not merely about increasing salaries, they signify a strategic investment in the city's long-term operational capacity, its ability to attract and retain essential talent, and its commitment to fostering a transparent and equitable work environment. Such an investment is crucial for maintaining the quality and continuity of vital public services in an increasingly competitive and challenging labor market. While the proposed adjustments carry a significant fiscal impact, the potential long-term costs of inaction, including service degradation, increased turnover, and loss of institutional knowledge are likely to be far greater. The recent postponement of the city council's vote on non-union employee adjustments underscores the political sensitivity inherent in public sector compensation decisions and highlights the imperative for clear, proactive public communication to secure community understanding and support for these vital changes. Successful implementation of the McGrath study's recommendations is therefore not just a matter of human resources best practice, but a critical step towards ensuring the city of Ashland's sustainable future and its continued ability to effectively serve its citizens.
Thank you. Sabrina, can you speak back what you heard in terms of council direction this evening for this particular issue?
Yeah, we're looking at a comprehensive financial review for how we're going to have financial stability moving forward, so touching on some of the projections from the things outlined tonight. There also is a desire for a retreat coming up specifically for city finances.
Timeline on that retreat, I would like to see it scheduled by October 1st, and for us to have that retreat before the end of the calendar year.
Is there interest from the council in terms of that timeline?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and were there any final questions? We are still at 7:29. Counselor Kaplan, I saw you had a question.
Well, I had a question follow-up, I had a question following. My other one, but I'm okay.
Okay, all right. Counselor Hanson?
Yeah, I had, I had a question to Counselor Sherrell's questions about the four-person household. I too have been getting those emails, and I think the way that the statistics calculate that is very different than how some of our citizens are calculating that. I just did a little research here online, and I, there's, I don't understand it either, so good luck trying to wade through all of that. That's why we're hoping to get more information from our city staff, because I think...
So maybe, maybe if we could provide some of that detail to city staff this evening, that might be able to clarify that tomorrow.
So when we're talking about median wage for a four-person household, that's what a four-person household earns in total, in the middle.
Right, but how, how many of those, how many of those four people are actually counted as earners? Anybody over 15 is counted?
Anyone in the household who's earning funds for, so over 18, so not children. So they're looking at like two adults and two children typically.
I'm just curious how our, our, our fellow constituents are calculating these numbers and, and really, because I, you know, 21,000 people, we've heard from, in my estimation, like 10 that are really concerned about some numbers, and I wish we could all be on the same page with the same statistical analysis to, you know, have an apples-to-apples discussion.
If you have any specific questions that you're hoping staff can answer tomorrow evening that are, that sort of simple analysis, help us understand this or that, please get them into staff this evening. With that, we are adjourned.